Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to this 42nd regular session of the Mayor and Council. At this time, please stand as you are able for the invocation, followed by the pledge to the flag.
Tonight, not only do I recognize Memorial Day, but also the passing of our city clerk's father, Mr. Don Spickler, who was buried today. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Dear Lord, give me wisdom to know which of your workers in the fields of the world need my help. Show me how my family can surround them with encouragement and support. Lord, please use me as your instrument to touch others' lives. Help me not to be concerned about what title I hold, but instead that my life might show others your grace. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Some announcements. We are operating under the rules and procedure adopted September 24th, 2013. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. Make sure mine is off. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. And just so everybody will review our meeting schedule for June, we have a work session next Tuesday, the 3rd. There will be no meeting on June 10th, as the MML convention will be there. I know I'm going. Are you going, Kristen, this year? Are you going to MML?
I am not.
And Marty, you're going. I'm going. Anyone else? It's a great time. Looking forward to it. We have a work session on Tuesday, June 17th, at 4:00, and then our regular session on the 24th at 7:00. At this point, we will, let's review the appointments that we are considering. We have, for the Board of Code Appeals, two folks being reappointed. Mr. Gregory Hannigan, his term expires on June 1st, 2018, and Mr. Aaron House, whose term would expire on June 1st, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, move for their reappointment, or their appointment? Actually, reappointment in this particular.
Second.
We have a motion to reappoint by Mr. Metzner and a second by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those reappointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. These folks are reappointed. The Planning Commission, reappointment of Colin Coleman, term to expire May 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. For the Historic District Commission, we have reappointment of Monica Workman, her term to expire on June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment of Ms. Workman to the HDC, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The Bicycle Advisory Committee, a very active committee, I might add. Reappointments of Mark Newbauer, his term expires, all these terms expire on June 1st, 2016. Mike Middle, Joyce Martin, and Richard Cuschois.
So moved.
You have new appointees there, Mr. Mayor.
Right. We also have two new appointees, Jennifer Fedig and Mark Youngblood. Again, all these terms expire on June 1, 2016.
And I would second Mr. Munson's motion.
And the motion is to appoint all six of those folks?
Reappoint, or newly appoint, yeah.
Any discussion?
I would only note, Mr. Mayor, that I'm not sure that, from the email I got, that Mr. Cuschois is seeking reappointment, but if he's not, he can tell us and we'll have to reappoint him.
Okay. Until then, he's, he's got the job, whether he likes it or not. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And we have, for the Memorial Park Circle of Achievement Inductee Review Committee, three folks to consider appointing. Linda Irvin Craig, John Frye, and Stephen Recker.
So moved.
Second.
And just to note, all those terms will expire on June 1, 2019. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you for that. We will notify those folks and get them sworn in as soon as possible. And with that, I would like to invite our guest, Brian Poffenberger, forward. Brian, please come up here. This is a certificate of appreciation. I just couldn't make the meeting that you had for the big to-do about your appointment to the state position at the Maryland Chamber of Commerce, so I said, well, let's get Brian to come to one of our council meetings, so we can thank him personally for all the work that, that he does. So, if you don't mind, you know how much I love to read these things.
Yes, I do. I will stand by.
So, this is a certificate of appreciation for Brian Poffenberger. For 10 years of service as president of the Hagerstown, Washington County Chamber of Commerce. Whereas, Brian J. Poffenberger began as the president of the Hagerstown, Washington County Chamber of Commerce in 2004. And whereas, Brian Poffenberger has managed the Community Lobbying Coalition, a joint community initiative that, working with our delegation, helped secure or save over $30 million in state investment in Hagerstown and Washington County. And whereas, the Chamber, through his direction, has created premium programs and events focused on economic development, business, networking, and public policy, developed cutting-edge marketing to promote both the Chamber and its members, and supported local government in making Hagerstown and Washington County a great place to live, work, and play. Brian Poffenberger will be greatly missed as he moves on to a new position. Now, therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, David Geisberts, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize Brian J. Poffenberger for his leadership, service, and dedication, and we express our appreciation for his commitment and wisdom on behalf of all the city, citizens of the city and the county. Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know that you're going to do a great job continuing to represent us. Would you like to say a few words? Aaron's got a microphone here. I know you do. I know you want to say just a few words.
Yes, I can never pass up an opportunity. Dave, members of the, of the council, all I can really say is thank you. At the event the other night, I sort of described concentric circles in, in the folks that I've worked with, and certainly, my family's at the center of that. They're the reason that, you know, as I said the other night, you guys get the Brian you get because of my family. But as we go out from that, and we, and I think about the other stakeholders that I've worked with over the years, there are none closer than the city of Hagerstown. So, thank you for all the support. It's been, it's been great working shoulder to shoulder, right up through today. We were in the, we were, we were voicing the importance of the city and its priorities just today to statewide stakeholders. I am a Western Marylander at heart, and while I, I'll have, I'll be wearing a different pin on my lapel, I, I will always think of Washington County and Hagerstown as home.
Well, you'll always be welcome here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Take care. Thanks.
Oh, sure. All right. At this time, we will take citizen comments, and there is one citizen signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Robert Miller. Mr. Miller, please come forward and state your name and address in the microphone for the record, please.
Robert Miller, 650 North Prospect Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm here to express that I would like help from the council to get a handrail put on the interior walk at the residence where I live, because it is so steep. And April the 4th, when it snowed, they didn't shovel the interior walk, and I'm walking down, and my feet just went out from under me. There was nothing to grab a hold of, and I had hurt my hip, busted a blood vessel, and I had to go to the hospital. And the landlady even said about putting a handrail, but code enforcement lady that was there said, there's not four steps, so you don't need a handrail. But this walkway is so steep that you do need a handrail. And I don't care if it's a young person, and they're walking down there, and the snow is on the ground, they're going to slide. That's how steep it is.
Hmm.
And when you've got to come up that walk, you have to lean forward, because it's so steep. And this is the only way I have an entrance to my apartment. I do not have a front entrance.
650?
Yeah.
This is at number 650?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you what, we'll have someone from staff contact the property owner and see if we can't get that problem resolved. Yes? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Miller had called me because he was going through the process of leaving one apartment, a building, going to another one. And when he moved into this, it is the very steep part of North Prospect as it goes down. The problem that he has is because he does not have a front entrance. He has to do everything from the back. So, the people now that have purchased the building, it was purchased last fall, I think I'm correct on that, and there were certain things that they had not done yet, which now they realize they have to do, but when the code enforcement officer did go out, she said that per our guidelines, it is not necessary. And again, we're talking a steep incline. So, it's a matter of, I can talk to the, to the landlord, I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't know where we can go if code is saying it's not necessary.
I would hope that the property owner would be proactive.
Well, I don't know, because, you know, again, it's, you know, because they failed to do rental licensing, that was one bugaboo, and I don't know how many other things, so I don't know what the, is going to be. And I certainly wouldn't like to see Mr. Miller be in harm's way.
No.
But of losing a place now that he, because the other place was deplorable. But I said, this is the only way that I know of trying to get something conveyed as to, there should be a railing. So, I need somebody's help.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pick up on that, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller is, what, 86 years old?
81.
81. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
He's also a veteran of the Korean War?
Yep.
Yes, sir. 1950.
So he served his country. He doesn't deserve to have to, to walk out of his house and fall when there's snow, ice, or water on the ground. I think, I think it'd be very good if code compliance could, could take another look at its decision and maybe, take a very careful look and maybe find that if initial decision wasn't a very good one.
Thank you for bringing the issue to our attention.
I thank you all. All right, if I leave now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Feel free to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Be careful.
I would hope that code enforcement could reach out to the landlord, just on, to see what can, can be negotiated.
I'd like to get a report back, by what all this is.
Okay, that brings us to city administrators' comments.
I have one this evening. Just a reminder that because of the Memorial Day holiday, all our refuse of recycling collection schedule is delayed one day this week. So everybody's pushed back one day this week because of the holiday.
Thank you for the reminder.
That's it for me.
Onto council comments. I'll start to my right here, Mr. Alshire.
Couple of things. The first is, you never know how you're going to read about these things, how the paper's going to report on them, so just a heads up, I did meet today, I was in a conversation with a board member, Donna Brightman, about a month or two ago, and was talking about, you know, the changes that, that are occurring as they, they have vacated their Board of Education facilities, and some, some ideas and discussions we've had about, you know, the downtown, the east end, and things like that. So she offered for me to attend one of their Facility Committee meetings, which is a public meeting, it's sort of a agglomeration of a number of board staff and several board members. But I don't, I want you to read an article that was a 20-minute sort of conversation between parties, because I think that that level of communication, especially in that type of public setting, is, is a good thing. And we talked about two issues. One in particular was the Bus Depot, as it stays, and how, you know, their ideas for the Service Academy may, may come to fruition on Frederick Street, so sort of that end-of-town sort of Board of Ed-related items within the city. And the other item we talked about was, obviously, all of us read last week or the week before of their idea for an additional school-type development downtown near the theater. And I will tell you, you know, one of the things that I noted is, is something that I think that I've conveyed to this body before, and is that, that's, when you read the work that the Urban Partners is currently conducting, that project that the Board of Ed just sort of, you know, put out there for public, public consideration, isn't in that document. So, one of the things that I noted was, you know, each of us are sort of pulled in different directions, our different bodies, at different times, and the, the more consistent we are in those approaches and in those types of big priorities, I think that the better served, both we are collectively and the public is, in terms of timing, to ensure that, that, you know, as those things come to fruition, all of the parties have a good understanding. Speaking of which, you probably saw my email that I sent to everyone last week from the release of the EDC report. I reiterate my comments that there was not a significant level of city involvement in the City Center Committee development of, of that part of the report, and I voiced a bit of my frustration on the timeline and the timeframe and the manner in which Liaison Councilmember Munson and myself did not receive that information. I also would note that, that there was an indication that a number of us of this body, in some discussion with a member of our delegation, shot down this neighborhood investment zone idea. We clearly, I think, voiced some concerns over that, but, but I think we voiced more so an element of unawareness of the details, and so, you know, we certainly don't control the actions of our delegation members, you know, if one thing's true. The third item is, I don't know how much you folks follow Facebook, but there were some comments about some activity at the Sheets on North Potomac. Mr. Mayor, I believe that's in the vicinity of your neighborhood, and I stop in there, you know, on occasion, and it is not the best of places to, to stop for convenience services at times. But I think there was an incident there over the weekend that I think is indicative of, you know, some of the activity that, that our citizens face when they do patronize that business. And I wanted to note, I guess Brian already left, but, you know, somebody made the comment last week that with Brian's departure, I believe the county now has in its presence the absence of a Director of the Chamber of Commerce, the absence of a Director of the Commission and Visitors Bureau, and the absence of a Director of the Economic Development Commission. To me, those are three very important roles. They carry a great deal of responsibility in this county and moving the economic development efforts of the county along. So, I know that there's a county election coming up, and I would encourage that those efforts to refill those positions and, and the shoes that are left be put forward. For staff, I got several emails about a property on Franklin Street. I believe we have visited that property at least once before for a significant amount of trash in the backyard, in the front yard area, which brings me to my last point, which is the continued statement that I have made is that you do see and are seeing a decline in what we would largely define as our traditionally homeowner-occupied neighborhoods. I mean, I don't care what neighborhood you go to, and I'm seeing it on my street, I see it in the south end when I walk, in the north end when I drive through, and, you know, virtually all areas. And one, one thing I would like to have a conversation on at some point is just what changes we have made to the element of code enforcement in, you know, in the past administration and, you know, in a few years prior, between when we implemented additional degrees of code enforcement and where we are now. Because, like I said, I, I see it, I think it becomes more apparent, and I'll tell you very flatly, some of the things that I see in my neighborhood, it gives me some degree of comfort that the level of rental out there for some of these places is only seven months, because as a homeowner, I only have seven months to endure some of that stuff. Those are my comments.
Mr. Brubaker.
Yes, supplementing Councilman Alshire's remarks, Urban Partners did stress the Maryland Theater, and I think projects in that area really sort of come under that emphasis, but we actually asked them for their recommendations as to what would most, you know, had the largest impact. And secondly, I'm not sure that they, you know, were aware of the Barbara Ingram proposal in any detail as they did their work, but I think really, it's sort of an all-inclusive area. I'd like to see both projects move forward together, if at all possible. The second thing is, Memorial Day at the courthouse was enlivened by a, an alarm for a fire up Washington Street, and I think a good time was had by all, and fortunately, not major damage. And I think the ceremony went on as planned. So, we had some disruption, but we had a good ceremony.
And the young lady who did the anthem, by the way, did a fabulous job considering the, all the sirens that were happening at the same time.
Right. We, we had an excellent anthem over top of all the noise and equipment. And finally, my regards to Donna Spickler, our city clerk, and her family in this time of sorrow.
Mr. Metzner.
Certainly, my condolences go out to Donna and the whole family in this time. I would also like to commend the firefighters and our fire police. The first, just by coincidence, because it coincided with the Memorial Day ceremony, our fire police were actually the first ones to see the fire and call it in and saved a, a number of animals. And a, a lady was saved from the third floor by very prompt action. And just another example of why having a fire service the way we do versus the difference between being in the county and being in the city, should I say. Having said that, I've been going to the Memorial Day services now for over 19 years, and it's becoming somewhat of a tradition as we go there to sort of amon the fact that the average age of people are usually over 60, and if you took away all the people that were bringing the, the flowers, there would not be very many people there. And, and that's been a disappointment over the years. The flip side to that is what has evolved, the Medal of Honor, which is the exact opposite. And this year, as with last year, it's just expanding. I want to commend Andy Smith and the entire Medal of Honor Neighborhood's First Group versus having very few people and having mainly elderly folks. That particular service at 6:00 PM is a community function. I think it was probably well over 100 people in attendance. Anywhere from three-year-olds to teenagers, to young adults, to, to elderly. And I commend all those folks for that, and I would encourage us as a city, as a city, and especially commending the staff, to remember that, so that next year, we should try to think to do everything we can do with that Neighborhood's First Group to encourage the ceremony and make it the premier event in the city of Hagerstown, so that when people think of Memorial Day services in Hagerstown, they're going to be at the Medal of Honor Triangle at 6:00 on that, that Sunday or Saturday. I think it was a very positive thing. And I reiterate the fact that having a Medal of Honor winner in Hagerstown is, is quite something. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Munson.
Mr. Mayor, I too would like to express my condolences to the family of, of Don Spickler. It was my honor and privilege to know Don for almost 40 years. He was an extraordinary man. This is a better county, a better community, because he was a part of it, not the least of which was, he produced the best city clerk in the state of Maryland. Also, while I'm speaking, I would like to thank the police. Police have actively been taking care of this community, including this morning when they caught some people who were spray painting the north end of Hagerstown. Thank you, chief. What a piece of good work. And in addition to that, there's some neighbor problems out there that, that one of the police officers have been working on, took, did, did a really good job on it. And I have to say that I appreciate, too, some of the work, all of the work, actually, that code enforcement, in connection with that sort of thing, has been doing, too. There are a lot of problems in this community that involve the, the help of code enforcement, and quite frankly, they really step up, and they get some good things done. So, thank you, chief. And I'm sorry, Paul isn't here, I'd like to thank him, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Nye.
Marty and I attended the job fair at Pangborn School, and that was quite interesting, because I think that they were really looking for people who had jobs that paid for families, that took care of their families a week, and we were kind of there as council members, so, but we did have some of the kids that asked, you know. It was just a very interesting mourner, morning.
So you told them if they want to make money, not to run for public office?
No, I did not. No, I did not. And they asked me, and how did you get into this? And I said, well, you know, all I can say is, is that I saw some things that I really didn't like, and I figured it was time to plunge in, and they wanted to know exactly what education I had and what made me have that drive. And I said, I really don't know I had the education for this. It was the drive that I had. But anyway, it was quite interesting. And also, there is a new owner at the Dagmar. I believe that the mayor has met with him, and he really would like to become a member of this community, and I'm hoping that there will be good things. I also received a phone call from a female citizen, and she was concerned. And this is kind of X-rated, so you'll have to just bear with me, but while she was at Walmart, she had seen a male with his family who had low jeans on, and how she described it to me was, low jeans, underwear with his male package that was exposed, under underwear, and you could see everything. She is wondering whether or not we, in fact, do have something that would prevent this from being on the street as we are seeing more and more of these individuals that are wearing their jeans, as I just stated. Now, not only can you say only for the males, because you also have females, but I said, you know what? I'll take it to council, and I'll see, do we have anything that does prevent anybody other than if you go into stores, they prohibit, but do we, as a city, do we have any ordinance in place that says, hey, you know what? Nope, this is not, this is not a good thing. They have it in schools.
Well, I think you know we've got.
So I told her I would get back to her, so you can think on that one.
Okay, well, I think.
It was very graphic. I mean, as she's telling me, yes, I certainly could, and that's why I did say it was much X-rated.
We have indecent exposure language in our code, obviously. If it reached that point, that would come into play in terms of clothing requirements, in terms of address code, you know, we don't, we don't have a dress code.
Right. But I mean, it's more and more, and let's. And let's face it, okay? Does it make it look good? No, it does not. And we've seen more and more of it. But I told her I would bring it forward, and I have. So I need to get back to her, so just give me what I need. That's it.
Thank you. I echo many of the sentiments that have been already expressed for the passing of Mr. Speckler, and my thoughts and prayers are with the Speckler family. And also, I'm very grateful for all the organizations who have put together Memorial Day ceremonies. It was an honor and a privilege to be a part of all of those on Sunday. Going back to last Tuesday, though, I attended the University System of Maryland graduation, and it just strikes me how important that institution is in our community, not just for what it does for downtown, which is part of its mission, but just the fact that, you know, the stories that these students told, and these are students who mostly are from Hagerstown or the immediate area, and how it changes our lives. Getting that college degree changes their life, and it will change the lives of their entire family. And just the work that needs to be done in our community to increase workforce development, which really starts in those first five years, zero to five. And it is appalling to me that the Washington County is the lowest in the state when it comes to kindergarten readiness, only sixty-six percent, which is by far the lowest across the state. So I don't think it's necessarily a choice of whether, as a community, we invest in early childhood education or in post-secondary education. But the fact is, we need to make that investment, and I don't think arguing that or bragging about the fact that we have the lowest per capita spending in the state is the way we're going to get there. Let's see, is there anything else I wanted to address? I appreciate all the council members being, oh, I did want to thank, I want to thank the city administrator and the staff, and again, council members Munson, or I'm sorry, Brubaker and Alshire for the work on the budget. Not all of us up here are budget experts, but the city administrator brought to us a budget that was very challenging in the sense that it had some, some difficult decisions that had to be made in terms of increasing the tax rates in order to meet the operational needs of the city of Hagerstown. So I applaud the, the good work on the part of staff, and I know the vote that we're going to take tonight to approve the budget is not necessarily an easy one, but I think it is a bold and necessary step. Still have a lot of work to do in the future as we look at the out years, but I just wanted to mention that and thank everybody for their work on that. Okay. With that, we'll move to item Roman numeral ten on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor council meetings held on April one, eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-nine, all twenty-fourteen.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, the minutes are approved. For the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Munson and a second by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? I would just note that the items are for the approval of an application permit and open container exemption for MSO Sonoma Happy Hour Event on June fourth and the Bike Night July eighteenth in City Center, as well as Public Works purchase for a fuel management system. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Unfinished business. Item A, the approval of an ordinance, the repeal of Chapter seventy, cable television and open video systems from the city code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor council approval of an ordinance to repeal Chapter seventy of the city code entitled Cable Television and Open Video Systems. Hereafter, cable television and open video systems will be regulated through individual franchise agreements.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, ordinance is approved. Next is the approval of the tax rates beginning July one, twenty-fourteen.
Mayor, hereby move that an ordinance be approved as introduced May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, to establish the city's tax rates for the fiscal year July first, two thousand fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, on the basis of zero point eight nine eight cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value of all real property and two dollars and point two four five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value of all business personal property within the city of Hagerstown. These rates reflect an increase of eleven cents per hundred dollars for real property and point two seven five per hundred dollars for business personal property over the current year.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson, or I'm sorry, Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I'll only reiterate your words, Mr. Mayor. This will be a tough battle. We'll need to be working on this all year to get the next two years under control so we can maintain the rate we set this year.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
With that, the eyes have it, and the budget, or I'm sorry, the tax rates are approved. Next up is the approval of an ordinance for the budget FY twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance as introduced May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, and subsequently revised to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, in the total amount of one hundred twenty-one million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Just want to make it clear that this is, includes the general fund and utilities funds and various other special funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could make a comment, please.
Please.
I'd like to point out to the viewers and to the media that the, that in a democracy, the budget is the essential document upon which we operate. It's a practical matter almost. Nothing else gets done, or nothing gets done without a budget. The budget is the heart and soul of government, especially on the local level like this. Indeed, in the state of Maryland, the budget is so important that that is the only bill that's required to be passed under the Constitution of the state of Maryland. And the budget, when you think about it, is also the circulating system of the, of the system. It's the blood and guts of the system. Without the budget, you don't have fleece protection. Without the budget, you do not have fire protection. Without the budget, you don't have roads. You don't have enforcement. Indeed, when lampposts get knocked down in front of City Hall, you can't replace them without the budget, unless the people have them good insurance. This budget document is a very important document. In, in, in a sense, it's a document of hope. Nothing gets done, and we all know this, anybody that's part of a family knows this, nothing gets done unless you spend some money to get it done. And this document, this budget, is a budget of hope. What is a two-hundred block of Locust Street needs work, needs work badly. But without a budget, there's no hope that any work will get done. And lots of other things in the city need work. But without a budget, there's no hope that any of it would get done. So I just wanted to express my opinion on that and say thank you to my fellow councilmen and the mayor who are supporting this document.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Nope.
The eyes have it, and the budget is approved. Under new business, we have the approval of a resolution for parking rates.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor council approval of a resolution approving the revised schedule of parking system rates and fees effective July one, twenty-fourteen.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next up is the approval of a resolution, an amendment to the MOU with the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown for operations of the University Plaza.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution for the execution and delivery of an amendment to the memorandum of understanding MOU between the city of Hagerstown and the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown for operations of University Plaza. This amendment makes the MOU consistent with the policing MOU approved in November.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. I'm sorry, Mr. Metzner. For some reason, I keep calling you Mr. Munson.
That's okay.
Any discussion?
Donna was calling me Mr. Brubaker. You know. One of those nights.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right. Item C, approval of a resolution and MOU with the University System of Maryland for groundskeeping services.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hagerstown and the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown for groundskeeping services for the University Plaza from July one, two thousand fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. MOU sets forth the responsibilities of both parties to maintain the plaza.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and the resolution is approved. Next is the approval of a policy for use and operation of University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a policy entitled Policy for Use and Operation of University Plaza to be incorporated as standard procedure and to provide rules and requirements to those who wish to rent the University Plaza.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Policy is approved. Okay. For the next motion, it looks like we have items E, F, and G. Is that right?
Yes.
All in the same motion.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that mayor and city council adopt the tax resolutions authorizing the execution of lease agreements between the city of Hagerstown and Duane Miller for residents at twelve, seven, twenty-seven Ritchie Road, Smithsburg, Maryland; John and Michelle Reinhardt for residents at twenty-three, five, ten Warner Hollow Road, Smithsburg, Maryland; and Charles and Laurie Henson for the resident located twelve, one, forty Crystal Falls Road, Smithsburg, Maryland.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have items H, I, J, and K.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council adopt the attached resolutions authorizing the execution of lease agreements between the city of Hagerstown and Eric Hastings for the residents located in Hager Park at two eighty Mill Street; Gerald Bernheisel for the residents located at Fungstown Park at five seventy Jefferson Street; Louis Thomas for the residents located at Staley Field at seven twenty-eight Frederick Street; and Timothy and Tina Schaefer for the residents located in Wheaton Park at one twenty-four Charles Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Leases are approved. Item L, under new business, an MOU for Washington County Soil Conservation District for use of grant funds at Kiwanis Park.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize city then to a memorandum of agreement with the Washington County Conservation Soil District for use of two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars in federal and state funds for restoring a hundred and seventy-five lineal feet of Antietam Creek's stream bank in Kiwanis Park. The stream restoration will be designed to serve dual purpose of providing watercraft access for recreational use by park patrons.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? Looking forward to this coming to fruition.
Very exciting.
Yep.
Do you have any idea when we'll actually see work started?
I think they said by fall, right?
Yeah, sort of this fall. That's right.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it, MOU is approved. Next up, item M, approval of standards for circle of achievement induction at Memorial Park.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the approval of standards for induction into the circle of achievement at Memorial Park. Intent is to honor citizens who made major contributions and achievements to our community. Standards will be used by the review committee to provide nominations for mayor and council approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes. You notice I did not alter it to say Jonathan Hager must be the first inducted.
Right. But I think you've made that point clear.
That's a recommendation I've made.
I think, yeah, you've made that point clear in several other conversations. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Memorial Park promises to be an exciting project.
Thank you.
A project that should bring lots of tourists to Washington County in the future. And this is a good project to see move forward. And I am appreciative of the city's efforts on this, especially Rodney, who has worked very hard on this. There's all kinds of potential down there to, to have walking trails, to access the city park that way, have statues down there, things that will, that will really attract people to Hagerstown so that they can spend their money downtown and enjoy the good food we have downtown.
Indeed. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it, motion carries. Item N, approval of first third grant application for twenty West Washington Street, Hagerstown.
Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached first third grant application for the renovation project at twenty West Washington Street. Total project cost is four hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-four dollars. The first third grant amount is one hundred and fifty thousand. Specifically, this grant application and related development plan meets the city's vision for redevelopment of the city center and is in compliance with the program guidelines. Staff are authorized to issue a letter of commitment in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand. No funds will be dispersed until staff have verified that all work in the development plan is complete to the city's satisfaction and that a full accounting detailing the total project cost expenditure requirements have been met. Funding for this grant will come from the general fund reserve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, uh, Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. On each of these, as they come before us, and I made this comment when we reviewed it in executive session, it appears that given that there is a finite amount of money, there isn't a timeframe. In other words, let's say we approve eight of these and four of them don't get going, how long do we allow the developer to go without getting going? And we decide to pull back and say, we're going to go with, with somebody else, then sort of hold this money up for, for making things happen?
The applications do call for scope of work and then a timeline to complete that work in-
Yeah, I saw that.
So, so if they don't get their, the work completed by the end of the timeline when they said they would, then it's a no-go.
So we spell that out very specifically in our letter of commitment to them that if you don't start by X date, the money is no longer available.
Or, or finish by X date, correct.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just curious if there's a process that this applicant goes through to say, hey, you know, I, I got hung up on some piece. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, at what point in the process folks got to be, you know, with the steps along the way. Because if it gets to, to, let's say it gets to that date, you know, and, and there's a number of occurrences, I don't want to continue to get letters saying, hey, you know, this-
of occurrences, I don't want to continue to get letters saying, "Hey, you know, this held us up or that held us up." Really, you're asking, under what conditions might the letter be rescinded or our commitment might be rescinded? Yeah, I think we should be able to spell that out to within our commitment, you know, at the time we commit, just so there's no misunderstanding when-
Understood. It's good.
They go to start, and all of a sudden, we say, "Hey, sorry, the money's no longer there." And so we're not sitting there with other projects and, you know, as this progresses, saying, "Hey, you know, I wish I'd have known about it," and they're ready to go, and here I'm waiting on somebody else to begin, so.
Interesting.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and the grant is approved. Item O is approval of first third grant application for 105 North Potomac Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached first third grant application for the renovation project at 20 West Washington Street. Wait a minute, where am I at?
You're right, it's written wrong.
You're doing fine.
Okay, the total-
You should say 105-
Well, okay, it should say 105 North Potomac. Come on!
They tried tricky.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Mm-hmm. The total project cost is $677,880. The first third grant amount is $225,960. Specifically, this grant application and related development plans meets the city's vision for the redevelopment of the city and is in compliance with the program guidelines. Staff are authorized to issue a letter of commitment in the amount of $225,960. No funds will be dispersed until staff has verified that all work in the development plan is complete to the city's satisfaction and that a full accounting detailing and total project cost expenditure requirements have been met. Funding for this grant will come from the general fund reserve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Ny and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Eyes have it, and the grant is approved. Item P, approval of non-union salary adjustment for July 1, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of a 2% cost of living adjustment to the non-union regular full-time employee salary scale effective the first full pay week after July 1, 2014. Additionally, all regular full-time non-union employees who are eligible for a step increase will receive one step enhancement from the step they maintained as of June 30, 2014. The salary adjustment has a total cost of $455,634 and is fully funded in the proposed fiscal '15 budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, and it's not pertaining to this, but I would like to know where we stand with the firefighters' contract because I feel that it had been okayed by the firefighters when it's going to be brought forward.
It is my understanding that the union has approved the contract, and we will get them in here to sign it as soon as we get the documents.
Okay. I just wanted to know because we're going through here with, you know, non-union, and we've got that one, it's out there looming.
Yep.
Okay.
I will say, we're not going to have a signing ceremony.
No, I know that. I'm not concerned about that. I just want it to be done.
Yeah, it's done. We're just waiting to get the paperwork.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it. And the next item on the agenda is acceptance of six take-home police vehicles.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve, to extend the police department's take-home car policy to the search management team and the hostage negotiator team. The total request would be for six vehicles assigned from the patrol fleet and would require no additional vehicles be purchased. The annual cost to the department for fuel and maintenance is approximately $6,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Last item is the approval of the speed camera truck contract extension.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and city council to authorize and approve a continuation of the existing contract between the city of Hagerstown and Breckford Corporation, initially approved on December 20, 2011, and dated January 3, 2012 through January 3, 2014, and in accordance with the state legislation recently enacted to authorize staff to develop a revised contract to be effective thereafter. This action will extend the contract expiration date to January 3, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to... The chief is here. I just want to make sure that this date is effective with the state legislation. The date of expiration with the new state legislation gives us enough time to do what we need to do. I mean, I know we discussed it before. Do you remember if there's a mandate in the state legislation?
The mandate-
A time, you know, must be done by time certain.
Sure. 2017. So it has to be done by 2017.
Okay.
We're just going to do it this fall.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Hey, yeah, good job, man.
Time and under budget. Have a nice night.